Yes, sir.
Call this meeting ordered in silence here electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation given by council member Twitchell. Please journey and recede your Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done. I heard that this was heaven. Give us sustain our daily bread. Give us our blessings, our pleasures, and our sorrows against us. Lead us down to temptation, deliver us from evil. And now the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Republic, Congress? Communications?
The, this was an event where we had received the application, but the event date was before this next meeting was scheduled. So I believe council has already seen this, but we just want to put it on here. The YWCA had their fall fest on last Friday, October 11th, in Jackson Square from 3:09 PM. So we were aware of that.
And I think you don't want to get any concerns. Next one?
Whole Life Fitness requested to hold a 5K on Friday, October 18th. This would start and end at 6:24 East Main Street and would be throughout the city streets from 5:00 to 8:00 PM.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay.
The Batavia Rotary requested to hold a 5K on Saturday, October 26th, starting at 5:15 PM. This would begin and end at DeWitt Park and throughout the city streets. The applicant also submitted a request to the county to use the park as well.
Any questions or concerns on that?
And Ever Present Church is requesting to hold a women's conference on Saturday, October 26th, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They'd like to use the city center concourse along with the church for their event. This one is pending final safety approval, I guess you'd say, for the entrances that are being built out there.
We have a second, secondary entrance to the other two that are still open by that date, so they'll be able to hold their conference.
Okay, any questions on that? Next city council meeting will be held Monday, October 28th, 2024, 7:00 PM. With the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. And first item on the agenda is the revolving loan fund for the Echo Waste.
Yes, thank you, Council President. But before I get started, I wanted to welcome Tom Phelps. He was appointed as DPW Director just last Monday. We look forward to continuing to work with you in your new position, Tom, and appreciate your dedication to the city.
Have you decided to like run away? Okay, that's a good sign.
Let's not push them. So, on to Eco-Waste. Eco-Waste is a government contractor that converts waste to energy, especially in remote job locations where sewer systems and waste removal does not exist. Rather than burning waste or disposing up, or burying waste, excuse me, or disposing it in other ways, they have advanced technology that is used by the military, natural resource companies, and remote communities. They have purchased a building on Cedar Street and would like to do exterior renovations. And I believe, Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong, this location is the US headquarters for research, development, manufacturing, and assembly.
Manufacturing is actually done in Ohio.
Okay, thank you.
This is a Canadian company. The CEO lives in Hamilton. So parts are manufactured in Ohio and it's assembled here on Cedar Street. It's a very interesting story. The CEO is actually traveling with her and her husband with her muscle car to a car show in Syracuse and it stopped here in the city center when Islands Resort and had lunch and fell in love with Batavia. So they drove around, this was two years ago. They found the site was for lease on Cedar Street. It was the old Horizon Building. And a year later, it started promotions to purchase the building. They do have a contract with the Department of Defense. The incinerators are used to, soldiers cannot, they have to dispose of their trash when they're deployed overseas. They were using jet fuel and it was giving a burn lung syndrome.
So they were burning it?
Yeah, they were burning it. And so this eliminates that. It's, they're very interesting units to see. It's like the back of a box truck, a small delivery truck. They assemble into three components. You can put a tire on one side, it comes out clean air on the other. They also use it in expeditions. They have smaller units for expeditions, like Andy's and different places. So there's no trash.
So the project is $65,000 of renovations and they're requesting a grant for $20,000 out of our grant fund. I remind council that we have also given a grant in that area to Cedar Street Reynolds, who built their new building. And this was reviewed by the Batavia Development Corporation and approved for your review at this time.
I'd like to also add that this is a two-part project. This is for the exterior renovations. And we will have a project that will be interior renovations as well that we will not, we will not expect to come in anymore.
Yeah, I think that's the original intent of it was to improve the outward appearance of various businesses and storefronts so that they could bring them up to standard, make them more modern, more presentable. And that's why we're encouraging them with the grant. So it's important that you clarify that because that was one of my questions. Because I know there's like all things going on here. I want to make sure it's just for the outside part. Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Questions? Yeah, now this plant is going to just do assembly work? Are they going to manufacture their own components also?
All the manufacturing is done in Ohio.
Okay.
So it's the assembly.
So they're just manufacturing from home sweet in Ohio, then they're going to ship it out to the military?
And they're estimating, when I, when I did a visit, there were two units being put together because of the size and the intricacy of the units. We have research technicians and engineers there putting it all together. There's a lot of components on the inside and so.
So it's higher end jobs here?
Yes.
And more of the R and D and the high-end assembly?
It's here.
And what is their expected water consumption in some areas?
They really only.
Minimal.
Yeah, they only have about a staff of probably 10 to 12 at the moment. And I, they probably don't really expect to have many more than that. One unit will be assembled on the, on the inside of the building and then it's tested on the outside of the building, in the rear. So it's really all that there's really space for as far as making sure that everything is done absolutely to perfection.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I, I think this is a big piece too. They've only used local contractors. So from the start, when they started leasing, any, anyone that they needed for fabricating, an electrician, they used all local. So their estimates are all from RH Heights and John Studio aside. So it's pretty interesting. At one point, the CEO had logged, he'd used 28 local companies from the city of Batavia in the surrounding area.
That's good. Any other questions or concerns? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Do you think it's moved? The grant, revolving loan fund grant request for the Shush Wine Bar?
Yeah, Shush.
Oh, Shush.
Sorry. Thank you, Council President. So the owner of 41 Jackson Street is remodeling the old Salvania and Gilliana's Diner Building. They've already done extensive work through the DRI on the exterior of the building, but they will be remodeling the interior to allow Shush Wine Bar to move into that space and hopefully open in the next few months. That building has received about a quarter of a million dollars of private investment thus far. This project would invest $65,000 and the grant would be capped at $20,000 from the city.
So this one a little bit different because it will have more of an interior renovation to it. It's also, they have a small structural. The piece in the back of that unit of the building has what possibly could be a little structural integrity that's been heated just because it hasn't been looked at. So they're going to have an engineer come up and look at it. There's going to be a rearrangement of where the kitchen was to put the Shush Wine Bar there. But the building, this is the missing tooth of the entire building. It's been renovated and we've participated in that except for this one little sliver. So this allows us that opportunity to say that we've made the building, we ate it in making the building whole.
Another question, are there some facade improvements? Doesn't, did, do facade improvements?
They don't currently have a grant available. They currently do not have a grant available for facade improvements.
Okay, I thought they did some with their own funds.
Not that I'm aware of at this time. I know they've discussed it in the past. We can certainly talk again about it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Do you think it's moved? Professional services agreement?
Yes, thank you, Council President. We have before you an agreement with Vargas Associates. They're a professional services firm that specializes in commercial interior design, relocation services, and procurement of furniture, fixture, and equipment, otherwise known as FF and E. With the ability to navigate complex statewide bids to help the police department maximize our budget for acquisition of FF and E. So the budget for the police station included $395,000 to obtain all the furniture, fixture, and equipment that we'll need to go into the facility. But we really don't have anyone who is an expert in acquiring those pieces for us and this contract would fill the gap. The proposal is for $19,780 and is included in the overall budget for the police facility. And I'll turn it to Chief if you have anything.
That covers it. Obviously, this is very specialized equipment that we'll be using. It needs to stand the rigors of not only 24/7, 365 operation, but you know, as well as what the officer's equipment, that type of thing. So we want to make sure that we get the best of the best within reason, obviously, to make sure that we're maximizing our budget.
And this will be done under the state bid procedure, right Chief?
Uh, there's a lot of different vehicles out there.
Yeah, so they, they are an expert in using the state bid. They're also an expert in using cooperatives, which we're allowed to use, or any type of other contracts that have been let that have a piggyback agreement. So they specialize in knowing what all of those are out in the unis, unisphere? Universe? To help us navigate that and, and help us pick things that match in color, style, and like Chief said, durability, right? Because the, you guys are rough on things.
Yeah, we're rough on things.
Well, it's a 24/7. So you need 24/7 furniture to handle all the needs and time and.
Yeah, we did look at their services for relocation, but we decided we're going to do the entire relocation of our evidence room in-house at a date and time I will not disclose to you or anyone else.
Until it's done. But they've also got some experience in the municipal field as well. They've done some police department relocations as well as other municipal, municipal facilities in general.
Just a word caution, be cautious with some of these contractors. One of them being Corcoran. I know another local government that bought a whole bunch of office furniture in Corcoran. And it was supposed to be really good, you know? And I was in one office one day and the desk actually collapsed. The person in charge of this local government said, "We have a whole room full of this stuff that's just literally falling apart as we're using it." So.
That's exactly why I want to do on a contractor, somebody that's a professional in Sarina, so we don't make those mistakes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Do you think it's moved? Residency waiver request.
Thank you, Council President. Chief and I would like to request a residency waiver for a member of the police department, Officer Sam Freeman. He has been with the department since 2020. Officer Freeman has requested a waiver to purchase a home merely minutes from where he currently resides. However, it's technically out of our residency requirements for city employees. I've provided everyone with a map so you can look at it. As you can see, we have several years ago, back in 2019, I'll say, yeah, April of 2019, defined our border as the adjacent town to the city. However, when you look at the 15-minute and 20-mile radius, there are actually locations where you can't live but are closer than some of the locations inside this border. So with this waiver, if council does grant it, I'd also like permission for a work group to be assembled to reexamine the residency proposed policy for the city of Batavia because giving away waivers isn't the point of having a residency requirement. So with that, Chief, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I would just add that Officer Freeman is a very dedicated member of the department. He is a field training officer. He's currently a member of our emergency response team. He has become a firearms instructor in the department. He takes on a lot of additional responsibilities. He works second platoon or 3 to 11 shift. Again, he has indicated to me he has no intentions of leaving our department. He loves it here, he loves the city of Batavia and working here. But he's, he's a country boy at heart and he's just looking for some property so we can go hunting, quite honestly. That's what it boils down to. And again, we've had issues with locating candidates. To Rachel's point, we did discuss this residency back in 2019 with other department heads over here at the time. We made some changes to it. There still is issues with retention and recruiting because of our residency that comes up from time to time, so we'd like to take a look at that.
So you definitely want to locate and revisit this?
I think we need to, yeah. I think just recently, the most recent civil service test for police officers, there was 100 candidates registered. We don't know how many actually took the test. And that's down from when we used to get 250. As far as I understand, state law allows officers to be in contiguous counties.
I think those are joint counties.
So, so I think all departments need to look at it jointly and together because departments have different needs. We have a recall system in the fire department where the majority of our firefighters live very close so they can be recalled and help when, especially when we're at minimum staffing. And then for DPW, I can't see anyone wanting to live more than 20 minutes away, 30 minutes away and working for the city. I don't think that would be an issue, but it's again, something I think we need to take a deeper look at. And maybe with that, there's an incentive to live in Batavia. I don't know. Other municipalities do give incentives for employees to live in the city. While they don't penalize those who are out of the area, they may incentivize members of the city workforce to live in the city. So I think there's just a, I think it needs to be reexamined because we don't want to bring you waivers. Our intent is not to come forward with these.
Yeah, I've discussed this with the manager and I agree 100% of providing some incentives, but I also feel that maybe we're doing something wrong here. We're good enough to work here, good enough to take, make a salary. In a lot of cases, at 4:30, there's a whole line of city-owned vehicles heading out of the city because people are on call. Why aren't we good enough to live here? And I think, you know, and I know, we're lucky to get a policeman today, Chief, as you know, but I don't want to see more and more people become stakeholders in the community. And I think when you live here, it is a different perspective, you know? I remember one time, one of the department heads was telling me, "Well, I go on my shopping in Batavia." What are Tops, Walmart? You know, that's not really helping the community. So I think we, having a task force look at this or committee and come up with some ideas, but I know in some of the cities where some areas aren't the best, they provide reasonable incentives for employees and there's nothing better than having a policeman live on your block or farm and all. And it's really motivating to the citizens. So I agree with what you want to do, Rachel. I think we need to move forward in that direction. Thank you.
So are we, any other questions?
We need to go down this.
Yeah, that's, that's getting back to what I wanted to explain.
Yeah, we try to bring in good people and then retain the ones that we have. I support this residency waiver 100%.
Right, but right now, we're worried about one waiver. And then because of so many in the past, the city manager is concerned and thinks maybe we should revisit this. And it's been five, six years since we did that. So I think we're due to kind of look at it, see if it's working for us or if we need to make some modifications to it. And ultimately, department heads have to ensure that that place is staffed. So I think they should be in a conversation for sure. So that's two separate issues. One is, we're just having a discussion and I think the city manager has been directed to kind of look into that, but we need to know right now if everyone's in consensus to move this particular waiver to tonight's business meeting for a vote.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, it's moved. Car seat grant acceptance.
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city's fire department continues to successfully run the child seat safety program under the leadership of Lieutenant Tefford. This year, they have been awarded $4,600 and I'll give it to Bob to talk a little bit about the program.
The program, so the car seat program that we run at the fire station, the money, the grant money that we receive is utilized to get new technicians certified, become technicians. We also use the funds to recertify technicians. We also use car money for purchase of the car seats. When we run events and people come to the fire station to get their car seat inspected, I think last year, we did around 200 car seats inspections. We distributed approximately eight car seats. Reason for those distributions was mainly because the car seat was either unsafe or the child had outgrown the car seat. In that case, we give those individuals, parents, as long as they come in with a child and a car seat, give those off families a new car seat. And that's what the funds do.
Okay, any other, any questions? So are we in consensus to move the car seat grant to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Do you think it's moved? Police traffic safety grant.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Along the same lines, the police department is looking to accept the 2025 traffic safety grant in the amount of $14,338. The grant is aimed at increasing seatbelt compliance and reducing dangerous driving behavior.
Yeah, thank you. These funds are, again, are received annually by the department from the Governor Traffic Safety Committee. They're used for targeted enforcement dates and targeted enforcement areas throughout the city as well as the required seatbelt mobilization enforcement, which is part of the program. So all of these funds are used to pay for overtime for police officers to actually go out and enforce a lot of special.
Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move the police traffic safety grant award to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Do you think it's moved? Motion to adjourn. Mr. Twitchell, second by I, Mr. Ryakowski.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes, sir.
McGinnis?
Yeah.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Ryakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Okay. And now, according to tonight's business meeting, we've all been given a copy of the August 2024 financials. Are there any questions or concerns on those? Before you, any council members here? Okay, the city manager might have to bring up something, go ahead.
Just a quick update. I know we don't always have questions on the financials, but taxes collection is at 95.5% collected after the two payments, May and August, which is a great number. As you always see, the collection is at 100% when you get your financials because these are legal receivables backed by the foreclosure process of those properties. Severino has not paid their property taxes, nor has J.C. Pennies and a few other larger ones that are outstanding right now, including Cedar. Yeah, Heidi, Heidi will think of it.
Meadowbrook?
Meadowbrook and.
At 163 Cedar Street?
Yes, which is the gas plant.
The CoGen plant.
CoGen plant, thank you. So we'll be working to see those come in, hopefully in the near future. Next month, we'll have all six-month budget projections completed and a resolution for transfers if needed. But so far, I took a quick look at everything this weekend and we look on track for our budget as of this time. The mall and city center fund, we have not received payments from Pennies, Dan's, and Everybody Eats, totaling $41,000. So we are hopeful that those payments will come in. I have heard that Pennies is looking to auction their property. But what that means at an auction or real estate auction is all arrears would be paid so we'd be made whole for those amounts. And then we'd make the city school district and the county whole. So when an entity in the city does not pay their taxes, not only do we not get those funds, we're also out money because we have to make the county and the school district whole for the privilege of being able to do the foreclosure process on those properties. A few other notes I had. Building permit fees are up. They're at $164,000 as of this financial statement, which was August. And we still have more coming in. The Cars Building just paid for their permit and we have a few others. So a lot of construction is happening around the city and that's one revenue line item that is up a lot higher than we anticipated. And lastly, due to the wastewater treatment plant Speedy's permit renewal and ongoing dialogue with the DEC, we're going to have increased costs associated with engineering, legal, and lobbyist fees that were unexpected, but at this point, we're able to absorb those in the sewer fund. If we are required to do any further studies on behalf of the DEC and what they're requesting, I will bring those back to council at that time for approvals.
Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to approve the August 2024 financial report? You've all been provided a copy of the September 2024 meeting minutes. Are there any questions or concerns or any omissions or additions? If you want to correct any September meeting minutes. So are we in consensus to approve the September 2024 minutes? Okay, those need to be approved. We have several agenda items today. Item 111, 2024, the Section 3 Coordinator for Public Works, Mr. McGinnis. 112, 2024, the Director of Public Works is the Labor Standards Officer, Mr. Twitchell. 113, 2024, transferring funds from on-site fund balance to various reserve accounts, Mr. McGinnis. 114, 2024, the resolution transferring $60,000 from on-site fund balance to committed fund balance for the Brisbane and transportation plane. Did you read your hand?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Schmidt. 115, 2024, the resolution to establish a capital equipment reserve fund for the city parks, Mr. Twitchell. 116, 2024, the amendment to the budget to reflect the receipt of NYSERDA Clean Energy Forest Pick Grant, McGinnis. 117, 2024, the loan grant for Echo Waste, Ms. Schmidt. 118, 2024, the loan fund for Shush Wine Bar, Mr. McGinnis. 119, 2024, the professional services for the new police facility, Mr. Ryakowski. 120, 2024, the residency waiver, Ms. Briggs. 121, 2024, the amendment for the car seat grant for the fire department, Ms. Schmidt. And 122, 2024, the traffic services grant for the police department, Mr. Ryakowski. I hate to put you on the spot, but do you have a report, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, just to introduce myself quickly, Tyler Olson from Underberry and Kessler in for George Van Ness tonight. Nothing, nothing specific to report. I think George will update and explain.
All right. Any questions for the City Attorney? City Manager's report?
Yes, I have 14 pages of updates.
That's one page out from what you told me.
So I was just looking at all the projects.
So I was just looking at all the projects that Department of Public Works has completed, and it is astounding. They've, in the last year, completed the Bank Street Water Project, the Jackson Street Water Project, the BOM Fire Facility Project, the Jackson Square Project, they resurfaced the BOM parking lot, and not only did they do three complete streets, they've also done the 11 micro, I'm going to say it wrong, micro paving, I called it the wrong word, this year. So I just wanted to point that out, that they have been working extremely hard. And while we do have contractors and engineers who consult with us, they do have to manage all those contracts and make sure the work gets done for our city. Beyond that, what's still looking for construction is Bank and Alva Street, the streetscape project. TY Lynn is the engineers on that project. They're currently working with the YMCA Office for the Aging and the folks in that corridor to make sure that the design is going to work for all of the neighbors with our streetscape. There's a little bit of a concern, buses turning into the YMCA off of Bank Street, so we're working through that now. The Cohocton Water Project, you've heard about for three years at least, and we are finally anticipating the project going out to bid this winter in 2024, with construction beginning in the spring of 2025. We do have to do amended services agreement with GHD, because we are going through a small portion of wetland that could contain the long-eared bat. So we'll need to do mitigation on that, but we are excited to have that project go through. The Cohocton Line has had multiple breaks over the years and is a major transmission line. The water plant still has numerous projects that are going on. The latest will be the Lime Saker in the Precipitator, or did we finish the Lime Saker, Tom?
The Lime Saker's done.
It's done, so just the Precipitator is left.
And the Wash Water Pump.
And the Wash Water Pump. So this is another three-year project that will be wrapping up, we hope, by the prior to winter of 2025. We are narrowing down candidates for the HR Director's position and hope to have an announcement in the next month or so. As you've heard, FEMA flood maps, we've engaged GHD and Anchor QEA, a water quality engineer firm out of Syracuse, to review the new FEMA flood maps on behalf of the city. The city team and our engineers were able to make several comments on the draft maps, and we're hopeful that the floodway will actually be reduced because of our comments. The next step in this process is the preliminary maps being published by FEMA and then public meetings on those maps. There's also a 90-day comment period, which we have every right to make official comments. It's a lot more stringent once they're in this comment period versus what they let us make draft comments on, so they've been working really well with us to look at the different properties going in and out, and they should honor, we're hopeful that they honor all of the LOMAs, which is the letter of map amendment that we already have on file for residents in that area. We had labeled them all on the map, and they will be taking a look at those. City center construction is about 75% complete, and there's been significant progress in the past 30 days, so we're hoping in the next few weeks that all of the entryways will be finalized, complete. We may have to do some landscaping work in the spring to finish up. And there continues to be movement on the private side at city center. Parcels eight through 10, which are the interior parcels across from the Sunnys Restaurant, have been sold, and there are new vendors working on the spaces that hope to open soon. The optician that was here in city center for more than 40 years has closed, and that parcel is for sale, and J.C. Pennies continues to see interest from a lot of different developers looking at market rate type housing and different types of venues they can use the space for. I don't think we'll ever see a big box retailer again in that space, unfortunately. It's going to have to be reutilized for something else. Lastly, our CBDG, CB, I would say, uh, BD, BG, grants, home grants are going very, very well. Ten properties have been selected, and they will be going out to bid and selecting contractors and getting work started on the houses. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the city manager? Thank you very much for the detailed report. Any unfinished business? I don't believe we have any. So Resolution 111, 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to designate the Director of Public Works as a Sector III Coordinator for applicable grant projects.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns?
Did anyone inform the UFRDPW that now additional duty is kept?
No, we just, we just didn't tell them before.
Right now.
Yeah, this is more of a, it's a record keeping thing, we're required to handle, and it's not going to take up too much of the time, I would call it.
We'll be between, but I'm sorry.
Any other questions or concerns? You call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Resolution 112, 2024, Mr. Bayakowski, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to designate the Director of Public Works as the Labor Standards Officer.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 113, 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution transferring funds from the on-site fund balance to various reserve accounts.
Seconded by, Mr. Twitchell. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Resolution 114, 2024, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution transferring $60,000 from on-site fund balance to committed fund balance for the Brisbane and transportation train.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 115, 2024, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to establish a capital equipment reserve fund to finance capital improvements and equipment for city parks.
Seconded by, Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 116, 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the 2024-2025 budget to reflect the receipt of the New York State SERTA $5,000 Clean Energy Communities Program Urban Forestry, addition correct.
Seconded by, Mr. Twitchell. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Resolution 117, 2024, Mr. Schmidt, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the continued revolving loan fund grant for and authorizing execution or participation agreement for echo waste.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 118, 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution authorizing the continued revolving loan grant for and other execution of participation agreement with the Shush Weinberg.
Seconded by, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Resolution 119, 2024, Mr. Bayakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to execute an agreement with Bardas Associates for professional services related to FFNE for the new police facility.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Resolution 120, 2024, Ms. Briggs, please.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to waive residency requirement.
Seconded by, Mr. Twitchell. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Sadly, yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 121, 2024, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the 2024 fire department budget to reflect the receipt of a car seat grant in the amount of $4,600.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
And Resolution 122, 2024, Mr. Bayakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the 2024-2025 police department budget to reflect the receipt of a police traffic services grant.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
And executive session, Ms. Briggs?
I motion to enter executive session. Whereas Article 7, Section 105,18 of the Cohocton's law permits the legislative body or municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of new property, or the proposed acquisition of securities or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body, when only one publicity would substantially affect the value thereof. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Batavia, that upon approval of this motion, the city council must hereby enter into the executive session.
Seconded by, Ms. Schmidt. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.